Election Board meeting to order by roll call, please.
Smith, President.
Grant's in, President.
Okay, me too.
For those who are able, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Everybody had a chance to review our meeting minutes?
Yep.
All right. Any changes?
I found none.
Same.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes on July 31st.
Certainly.
All those in favor?
Certainly.
Grant's in, I.
Newman, I. All right. First up, we have a presentation by the Sterling Municipal Light Department for our Lam Fiber update. We've got Matt Stelmac and Bill Underhill here to let us know what's going on.
Thank you. Matt Stelmac, he owns the Light Department for about a year and a half now. Things are going very well on both the electric and fiber. But I realized, as I was watching one of your meetings and listening to some discussion on fiber, that I hadn't been in front of you since I'd been here in a year and a half. So I arranged it with the town administrator, and here I am. We're here just to bring you up to date on the fiber. There's really nothing new to report on electric, except, you know, those guys are doing great, keeping your lights on, keeping your rates low, and keeping people safe. That's what we do. On the Sterling Lam side... I don't know if they can get that up top, though. Bill's gonna walk you through the actual ins and outs of it. We're coming up on a... We just came up on a huge milestone that he's gonna talk to you about. We're gonna talk about our plans, what we've accomplished to date. We're gonna talk about what we plan to accomplish through the rest of this year and then beyond. Because we get flooded with questions all the time. We're having a booth at the fair again this year, which was very successful last year, an information booth. We got a really lot of traffic there, it was great. And we're gonna do that again. But we do realize that we need to get information out there better than we're doing now. We can't rely on just the website, so here we are, okay? So with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Bill Underhill, and he's gonna say a little bit about what we've got to do.
Hi, and it's very nice meeting all of you. For those who have not met yet, as Matt said, I'm Bill Underhill, a network coordinator over at SNLB. I started there about three and a half years ago. I was brought in specifically for this project. So I have a little bit of experience in fiber optic networks, and I think it goes back to 1982. So, you know, it just says I'm not... that I'm an old man. But this is what I do, and it's what I love doing. So this is a great... a great place for me right now. So we'll start with what we call the pass rate. There are approximately 4,000 electric meters here in Sterling, Massachusetts, and we pass 1,509 of them as of today. So we're passing 37% of all the residents and businesses here in Sterling, Massachusetts. We're still putting fiber up, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. But that's where we are with that. Of those addresses, 593 have taken the service. And that's as of August 7th, which gives us a take rate of about 32%. So we had about 32% of the people we passed their houses sign up for our service. The milestone Matt wanted me to bring up is yesterday, we actually got our 500th customer. And we consider that a pretty big milestone. And actually, as of today, we're at 505, so... And then of those 493 customers, approximately 10% are businesses here in town. Some large, some small. But for the most part, the business customers have been very happy with the service that we've been delivering. So the highlights for this year. So we completed the campground area. Lake Shore Drive, Squashire Road area was completed in April. Upper North Row, northern part of Haywood Drive. Kendall Hill, Sweat Hill were completed in June. Another major milestone is we did the Sheldon Terrace. The Sterling Housing Authority, all of those units now have fiber optic going to them. We worked with the Housing Authority to get that done. Chase Hill Road, we completed in July. Cider Hill Estates, we are just finishing up on those. We're installing customers there now. And so about 150-plus customers so far this year. May, June, July, and August have been averaging about 25 to 30 customers a month, which is... And again, we'll be providing free Wi-Fi service at the Sterling Fair this year, like we did last year. Great feedback from that. We did something a little special with our vendor who we work with. And we set up three separate networks, one for the general public, one for the food carts, the businesses that were there, so they could do their point-of-sale system over the internet instead of over cellphone, because cellphone service can be spotty here in town. I said that very nicely. So... and then we did another network for the public safety folks. So they were on a completely separate network from everybody else. The business people really liked it, because what we were able to do is separate them from the general public. So they don't have to worry about somebody doing an Instagram trying to break into their point-of-sale system, right? So there were three completely separate networks. So we got a lot of good feedback on that. 24 highlights.
Okay, yeah, well, next in construction, we're gonna finish Redstone Hill and any of those side streets that are aerial. We've got line crews pulling fiber on Clinton Road. That's primarily, Bill, part of the grant obligation?
Uh, no.
No, that's...
Nope.
That one's complete?
That one's complete.
Okay. Ozwood and Haywood Road cabinets, we'll have service down there in the fall. Bill's gonna walk you through the map in a couple of minutes. We have construction going on Princeton Road and Justice Hill Road. And our real priority is the Town of Sterling assets down there as a part of... You know, really a part of the grants, radio and water assets. All right, well, what's next now? Okay, our primary obligation is to meet the requirements of... We have one final grant that we have to meet by the end of this year. So that's our first and foremost, we have to do that. We're looking into financing. Right now, we've kinda... we're financing... The Light Department is financing the fiber. It's a... it has a loan that would be paid back. But we found that that's becoming an issue for the Light Department to bear that. So we're gonna go out and get some outside funding. We were hoping that interest rates would be there by now. We had all the numbers, and every time we worked through the numbers, it made no sense to get a loan. We're gonna be using the fiber that's out there to smarten and toughen up our electric grid, which is something that is a new trend, kind of options for, you know, smart switching. If the tree falls on this line, we can reroute automatically. We're looking forward to doing that. We're applying for a grant, a federal grant for that as well. Our... everybody's asked us when, when, when? And we don't get all that specific right now. But we're targeting full overhead deployment at every customer in Sterling with overhead service end of 2027 into 2028. And then the underground portion, which everyone seems to be... Most people seem to be inquiring about these days, is out into 2029, 2030. I wanna take this opportunity, because I don't think the next... There's no... the next slide doesn't really... Okay, we're gonna do a couple of things before we say thank you. I don't wanna take up too much of your time. I'm gonna tell you about... I wanted to talk about Cider Hill real quick, because that's an underground subdivision, right? And we were able to go up there using some construction techniques that some of our peers are using and utilize some of our existing underground infrastructure to pull fiber through. You know, fiber's... it's not a wire, it's non-conductive, it's glass and plastic. So we're able to co-locate with some of our electrical facilities. And that's how we were able to do that area with minimal trenching and zero disturbance of pavement. And we believe that... we have to look... Every subdivision is different. We looked at one, I won't say its name because it'll just get some people going, but we looked at one where it wasn't feasible. The underground utilities were just too old. We did not want to disturb them. We'll come back in a couple of years with a project to replace the electrical, and when we do that, we'll put in pipes for fiber. But we believe that some of the subdivisions that we've gone and upgraded the electrical, it's feasible. So the newer subdivisions, certainly. And we're looking at them one at a time. I'm doing a study right now. You know, it really... it's gonna be more based on... We're gonna do it based on payback and interest. So, you know, people hear me now. If you can get everyone on your street to sign a petition... And that's actually what happened at Cider Hill. You know, if we know that half the people on your street are gonna take the service, we're more likely to head in that direction. So I'm comfortable saying that now that we've completed this pilot. So that's good news.
And another public service announcement, if you can, to the people who are listening, keeping your information up to date at the Light Department. Just give us a holler, let us know. Email and telephone is still correct. We're not gonna call you, we're not gonna bug you. But what we like to do is when the neighborhood becomes ready and you've signed up saying we want to be on the fiber interested list and we have your information, we'll usually send that an email two or three days before the rest of the neighborhood finds out. What we'll do is we go around with a door hanger and put it on everybody's door. But before we do that, if we have your email, we can give you a quick email and you can sign up for service a little sooner than your neighbors. So a little bit of incentive there to keep it up to date. You know, it's always good to have the contact information with us in case we have to get ahold of you for any other reason. But for fiber optic, it's a good one as well.
And if we do have a couple more minutes, I don't know what your time is... Bill was gonna...
Very busy.
You have an agenda, I see that, a rather lengthy one. But Bill would take you through our fiber map, and that's on our website. It was difficult to navigate to at one point. We think we've helped that out.
So right up here, right on the top, is the fiber-ready map. Okay, so right on the top of the Sterling Lam webpage. All I gotta do is learn how to use a computer, and I'll be in good shape. So here, here's the map, and I'll make it fullscreen. And it is the same map that is behind you there. Pardon me, I need to zoom out just a little bit. It's a bit of a jumbled mess, but it's a good jumbled mess.
I know, watch you zoom in there.
Uh, it does not like me.
Richard, you're fiber-ready.
Okay. So we don't have really the town lines on here. This is from Google, so a little bit is kind of hard to see. But for the most part, all the green areas here are fiber-ready. All the yellow areas are the ones under construction. So this is what we're doing on Redstone, this is what we're doing on Clinton Road, and then we're gonna start very, very soon on getting the Justice Hill and all the way out to the water site out on Route 140 on Redemption Lot. Thank you. The interesting ones are the blue ones, okay? So the blue ones are underground areas, so those are to be determined. So right now, we don't have any red for the engineering part. That's gonna be changing shortly. As we do the engineering for Osgood and Haywood, and then going down Princeton Road and up Justice Hill, we'll start engineering the neighborhoods for that. But for the right now, what we have is what we have available, what's being under construction, and what's on hold because it's underground for the time being. We are working on a different way of getting into the underground neighborhoods, and hopefully we'll be moving along on that this year, so...
All right.
Any questions?
I have one.
Sure.
Oh, how old do you consider an older development... Or what's the newer developments? How many years out, do you know? I mean, like...
I'll give you an example. I lived in Foxfire for ten years. It would have been an issue. But we went in five years ago and rebuilt Foxfire for electric, so it's clear. Like I said, I don't wanna name the streets yet, because we haven't surveyed all of them yet.
Yeah.
But, you know, certainly, well, Foxfire was a while ago, so 25-plus years...
Yeah.
Could present an issue.
So unless you're going in to redo the electric, then some of those 25 or better years, probably 20 or better years, it wouldn't be available?
It might not. We can't say it wouldn't, because we haven't looked at the facilities for fiber.
Wondering where I can go to get my petition going?
Call me.
Call you? You don't answer your phone. You see it's me, and you go, "Yeah."
Oh, I'm out serving the people already.
It's giving you a hard time, Matt?
I just hope people know how fortunate we are to have this in our town. So many people that we know, friends of ours are jealous that we have this. So if you are fiber-ready and you haven't signed up yet, I mean, really, it's a great deal and a great service. Everyone who has it just raves about it. And that would probably help you too with your funding, if you have more revenue coming in. So if you'd like to help people that you know in town who need their fiber, sign up.
And the pricing is competitive with other services?
It is. Some of the other competitors out there have more strings than a roomful of violins. But ours is very straightforward, very cut-and-drying. If you sign up for our $65 service, you get a bill for $65. And that's been the bill... We've been doing this now for almost three years, and we have not had a price increase. So we would like to continue doing that.
And you're not locked in for a certain amount of time?
So no, I mean, it's simple. What we do is we ask that you sign on for two years. If not, we ask you to do a small installation fee. But for the most part, everybody's been jumping on for, "Yeah, I'll do two years," and there's no installation fee.
Free roco.
Free roco.
That's what Kirsten said, too. I don't hear anybody complaining. They're very complimentary about the service and the people when they have a problem, showing right up, and a lot of instructions, you know, which is nice, education.
Our help desk is based out of Syracuse, New York, and it's usually answered on the first ring. So... and you don't have to enter a 37-digit number and then have to repeat it when you get to talk to a human. It's all very much an organic, easy system to use. The help desk I've used before my previous job, they're fantastic. They have all the same tools I have and know them as well as I do. So saves me a lot of work on nights and weekends. They can take care of a lot of the issues. But we don't really have a lot of them either, so we've been very lucky that way.
Is all this installed done with your crews or is it contracted?
It's all our guys.
Actually, that's a good question, because in order to control costs, we initially... and quality, we initially launched this 100% our own crews. We recently brought in an outside splicing crew to help us speed it up a little bit. We're considering bringing in some... Because our installation requests have gone through the roof. Quite honestly, we're a month straight out, at least.
We already have eight installations scheduled for September, so...
Yeah, and that's... so that's... So we will not bring in crews, outside crews, and let them in anyone's home. Any contractors that come in will be accompanied by our staff. We wanna maintain that. That's one of the things that the Light Department and Lam have always prided ourselves in, is the service and the quick service. You know, how fast, when something's wrong, we get to it. We wanna maintain that.
How long does an installation take? Couple hours?
Two to three hours, generally. Some of them are a little longer, some are a little shorter. But in general, between two to three hours.
Look forward to seeing you guys in my neighborhood.
We look forward to serving you.
Yeah, I bet. After harassing you for like three and a half years.
Thank you both for all the hard work and to your crews. Appreciate it. I see them working hard every day in all conditions, so thank you.
Thank you.
Definitely appreciate your crews. Nice group you have. Like you said, hard-working.
All right. They are free to go.
They can do that, or you can stay for the rest of the week.
All right, next up on our agenda is a parking agreement with Hathaway Memorials. And those who don't know what we're talking about, it's the Brown Building right next to Town Hall. There's a new tenant going in there, and so we need to update our parking agreement with them for the parking spaces along the side and out behind the building that we use for municipal parking as well. All it is, is an agreement that says the parking there is on a first-come, first-served basis. And both entities can use that parking on that first-come, first-served basis. So with...
Pretty much the same agreement that we've had with the previous owner for a long period of time.
Still don't park too close to the building, do you?
So with that being said, I would welcome a motion that we sign off on the parking agreement with Hathaway Memorials.
So moved?
Certainly.
All those in favor?
Certainly.
Matt's in, I.
Newman, I. All right, thank you. And next is to appoint our election workers. For those who may not know, we do have a state primary coming up on September 3rd, so we need to appoint these election workers. And there is a list for you there. So unless there are any questions, I would welcome the motion that we appoint the election workers as listed.
So moved?
Certainly.
All those in favor?
Smith, I.
Yes. Newman, I.
Grant's in.
And so with the election workers, and I mentioned that we do have the election on September 3rd, we would welcome any students 16 years and older to come and work the election ballot boxes on that day. So if you have a child who may be interested in the democratic process and would like to come help out, please come and contact the town clerk, and she can get you set up for that. Also have early voting the week before, on Saturday, the 24th, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And then Monday through Friday, the 26th through the 30th, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. I would just check the Friday. That's what was listed, but I know Town Hall closes early on Friday, so don't quote me on that one. But the information is available on our website for the early voting as well. All right. Any other comments or questions with the voting?
Nope, thank you.
All right. And then with that election coming up, next on our agenda is to sign off on the warrant for that election. So as long as there are no questions, I would welcome the motion that we sign the warrant for the state primary on September 3rd.
So moved?
Certainly.
All those in favor?
Smith, I.
Matt's in.
All right. And I know we've all been looking forward to the fair coming to town, September 6th through 8th. And so we do have some agreements to sign to get that moving along. We have to hold harmless agreements for some businesses that are located on those parcels that are used. Mercurio and Sun Construction, Ground Control, and Jim Simpson, James Simpson Excavating and Central Mass Equipment Corp. So that's just saying that they are not liable for anything that may happen on their property during the fair. And we also have an agreement with the landlord and tenant to use the airport site for the Sterling Fair. So are there any questions with regard to these agreements for the fair? And we do have insurance stuff coming.
We are working on it.
Sounds good.
Not done yet?
Very close.
All right.
Yeah, very close.
Both the fair and the interview.
Right. So I would welcome the motion that we sign off on these fair agreements.
So moved?
Certainly.
All those in favor?
Smith, I.
Matt's in.
Newman, I. All right, Bill, you are up with your report.
So remaining, a couple beach projects are still going on. We're working on the signage currently. As the weather gets a little bit cooler and we have a better place to figure out what we're gonna do with the storage, we'll get rolling on the brick building that we determined a few meetings ago to get that cleaned out and taken down. Obviously, we still have to do some of the environmental testing and everything shut off and moved out. So we don't certainly want to move it more than once, so we'll get it done and boxed up and put where it needs to be the first time. A few grants that were obviously upcoming would be the ADA grant. That's usually a fall announcement for the 1835 bathroom upgrade to make that compliant fully. One Stop for the Downtown Project and the MIA, our insurance company, Risk Management, to offset the cost of the asset management software that we're putting in right now with Wes Boilston, also with our shared facilities manager. We're looking at some of the other upcoming grants, including the IT grant, which we got a couple years ago for the phone system townwide, and whatever else comes out. So we're plugging away at those. The three that I just mentioned are all ones that we have applications submitted in for fair insurance. I have one of the two quotes that we're getting, and you have the... where you just voted on the agreements. So those are all set at this point. Pricing, you know, pretty similar to last year. So once we get the two quotes, we'll see what works best and work with the landowner and get that situated. Obviously, departments are working on their capital items that were approved at town meeting. We do have the capital improvement document that was completed through the Community Compact Grant. That's been finalized. We do have some changes, and obviously, it's a living document to use moving forward. The capital and finance committees do have it. And the budget documents, the second part of that, we had a kickoff meeting, Fred and me, with the consultants at UMass Boston this morning to start getting that ready to start collecting all the information for. The elevator at the library, pretty much complete. I think they just finished up the state... We're going to be getting the state inspection pretty soon. Still working with vendor on the lift. School security, the cameras and whatnot have been installed. Waiting inspection on that. Mentioned the town beach, the engineering for 62 and 140. Ryan's been working on that pretty diligently lately. But those are the big items, so plugging along. Summer's coming to a close.
Not yet. It just started.
Middle of August.
I know, but it feels like it just started.
All right, anything anybody would like to discuss or add?
Bill's, no. I'm also...
Anything else in general?
Yeah. We talked about the Sterling Fair, and we just signed off on a lot of things for the Sterling Fair. They are still looking for volunteers. So they have the planning and information session that they're doing, and it's August 20th, 6:30 at the Sterling Brewery. They'll have people there to answer any questions. You can sign up to volunteer on different aspects of the fair. And much appreciated. Maybe somebody will even lie here, maybe. But also... But also, on September 3rd is the Lafayette coming to town through the Historical Society, 10 to 11 over at Memorial Park. There'll be a lot of pomp and circumstance for that. They won't be here long, but the Historical Society has worked a lot on this for a very little piece of time. And we are still looking for people on finance, capital, EDC, and the cultural council, from what I heard the other day.
All right.
And we would be remiss if we didn't say to Kama and Vicky for their beautiful rendition of God Bless America at the Wusox game.
Yes.
The game was awful, but the singing was great. Also, a shout-out to Nate, Auburn Nate, Hussein, the National Anthem, also kid from town, fabulous job. I'm still kind of insulted that they didn't ask us Christian to sing, but I guess we'll get over it.
Another year.
No.
Another year to practice.
Good luck with that.
Thanks.
And tomorrow night, 15th, Keep Your Eyes Peeled, there's supposed to be the car show over at the Senior Center. However, they'll make a call in the morning whether or not we'll proceed because some indication that there'll be thunderstorms and rain. So if it's not this week, it'll be next Thursday. And, I mean, free ice cream, free hot dogs. It's banned, whole nine yards, and some old cars that Dave probably previously owned, 'cause he's old. I'm just saying.
I like anything old, Mommy.
Oh, that's why we're out.
All right, all right. Stop right there.
You're off, Christian.
Dave, anything?
Nothing, thank you.
All right, all I have is I would like to set some goals for the select board the coming year here. And so if you would like to think about some goals and we can discuss it at our next meeting, that would be great. Throw some ideas out there.
You have a particular focus?
Uh, a little, but I'd like to see what we all bring to the table at our meeting. And if there seems to be something in particular that we all agree we need to focus on, then we can focus there. But if we all bring maybe two ideas to the next meeting and we can choose from those, I think that would be a good way to go about it.
So select board.
Select board goals.
For, and then directed for Town Administrator, Bill?
And then we do a bill review soon, so I just wanna throw that out there. And we'll work on getting that put together. Like to try to have it done maybe end of September if we can as a timeframe, so we'll have to. Just gives us time to talk to department heads, things like that, however we wanna handle it, so get that process going. All right, that is all I have. So, anybody here for public session? Very good, then I would welcome a motion.
Nah.
All right.
Okay, I make a motion to a turn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Smitha.
Newman eye.
Grass, Matt.
All right, thank you.